Very good. Good evening, everyone. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of Monday, August twenty nine, two thousand and twenty-two. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. I hope everybody is doing well tonight. For the folks at home, the items being discussed on tonight's agenda, we're going to have two public hearings. Actually, the public hearing on the Spectrum contract, I'm sorry to say, will be extended once again to our second September meeting. And we have a public hearing at seven forty-five on local law C, truck routes and weight limits. We'll have some public comments. And then we have follow-up. We had a very comprehensive presentation from the Audubon Sustainability Project Task Force. And so they're here with us again, and they'd like to highlight a portion of their draft project and talk to us about next steps. I will be taking up the conversation on local law C and perhaps voting on truck routes. And we'll then go into some typical work that we have to do this time of year, which is go out to public bids to get the best prices for highway materials for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three season. We're going to authorize also the sale of some surplus equipment. I'm going to take in a few committee and board reports, and we have just a little bit of correspondence. Okay, seeing as it is now seven thirty-six, well, why don't we do the public hearings back to back? I'll squeeze in a couple of quick announcements for folks. We want to let you know the beloved annual Tivoli Street Painting Festival this year is Saturday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. I believe the rain date hasn't finished. Oh, it has, October first, the following Saturday. Starts at nine o'clock, and you get free supplies and pre-registration is encouraged. And I think in the past, Dutchess County Council on the Arts has helped sponsor that. All right, the VFW would like us to know a couple events they're having, one on September eleventh, the barbecue chicken event at Elizabeth Street, and then the Heart Scrabble Committee is hard at work. They want you to save the date for Saturday, September seventeenth, for the music festival. They're bringing it back in person this year. There'll be lots of food trucks and goods from local farms and the community. Save the date and come celebrate some of the best Red Hook has to offer. Okay. I think that's all we have for announcements. One more correspondence from Dutchess County. We're pleased to announce that we have received the one hundred thousand dollar grant towards a multimodal connection from Rec Park East to Rec Park West, and we thank Dutchess County for awarding that grant to us. Okay, very good. We'll come back and we will do, well, let's see if we can squeeze in. Let's squeeze in the supervisor's report. Okay, for the folks at home, we do a monthly report, state of the finances. Go to the highlights. All of this is available on the town's website. We started the month, and this is for the period, in this case, ending July thirty-first, opening balance of nine point four million, receipts of eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, dispersments just under half a million, with the remaining balance of nine million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Okay, we have some budget adjustments for the town board. Were there any questions about those budget adjustments? Okay. There is an increase in appropriations. Building Department Secretary Building Department is still busy. So that's good news. Okay, and you also have your reports of fund balances, your variance report. Are there any questions about the supervisor's report? Town Board members, if not, I would entertain that we go ahead and we accept a motion to approve them.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Lauren and Christine came out with us this evening. Thanks very much. Deanna, you also have your clerk's report for the month of July?
Yes. The town clerk's report for the period of July first to July thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two, total local shares remitted to the supervisor, five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. Amount paid to New York State Agriculture and Markets for the spay neuter program, forty-eight dollars. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, one thirty-five, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation for hunting and fishing licenses, ninety-four dollars and forty-eight cents. Total state, county, and local revenue, six thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. I also have a voucher. So I, for July two thousand and twenty-two, I hereby certify that vouchers number two nine three six four to two nine four five seven processed in the month of July two thousand and twenty-two are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board.
Very good. Is there a motion to accept the town clerk's report? All in favor, Bill Hamel?
Aye.
And myself. Motion is approved. Okay, we're running just a couple minutes late, but we're going to open up the first public hearing on the Spectrum contract. Deanna, could I ask you just to summarize, since this is just a continuation of the other, just the introduction on the public hearing for this one, please?
Yes, excuse me, Robert, I need the vote who moved and who seconded for the clerk's report. I did hear that.
And for that one, I had Julia Solomon.
Okay.
Jacob Testa, and then myself and Bill Hamel voting on.
Right, okay, thanks. Okay, so the notice of the extended public hearing for the town of Red Hook, that public hearing extended from June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, further extended from July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, and further extended from July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, will be held by the town board of the town of Red Hook on August twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven thirty-five PM local time to hear all interested persons on proposed franchise renewal agreement between the town of Red Hook and Spectrum Northeast LLC, an indirect subsidiary of Charter Communications Incorporated. Spectrum submitted an application to construct and operate a cable television system within the town of Red Hook and has requested a grant by the town board of a non-exclusive franchise. The whole holding, the town board has the authority to grant said franchise pursuant to town law sixty-four seven after holding a duly noticed public hearing that affords the public the opportunity to provide comment. Do you want me to continue?
No, that's good enough. Thank you very much, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Testa?
Aye.
Very good. Is there anybody who's joining us tonight who would like to make comments on this? Okay, if not, to let you know that we are going to continue this to the second meeting in September, Deanna, which is September?
Twenty.
And at seven thirty-five, continuation by motion. Is there a second? Don't all jump in there. Bill Hamel is there. Jacob, thank you. All in favor, Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Jacob Testa, thank you for, sorry, Julia Solomon, I'll get it these days, right? Okay, very good. All right, so now we are just about on schedule for the second public hearing tonight. That's seven forty-five, that's the local law C truck routes, and let me go ahead and pick that up. All right, Deanna, would you be kind enough to read the public hearing notice on that one?
Notice of public hearing, town of Red Hook, please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the town of Red Hook on Monday, August twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven forty PM local time to hear all interested persons on a proposed local law, number C, proposed of two thousand and twenty-two, entitled "A Local Law Amending Chapter One Thirty-One Vehicles and Traffic to Include Provisions for the Establishment of a Truck Route System on Certain Highways in the Town of Red Hook, to limit the operation of heavier trucks and similar vehicles to certain highways in the town, which will benefit the health, safety, and welfare of the public while still providing suitable connection with all state routes entering or leaving the town. Town Board has determined that the proposed local law is best described as an unlisted action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, seventy-three forty South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, one two five seven one, pursuant to New York laws of chapter of two thousand and twenty-two, chapter one. The meeting will be held via teleconference or video conference. Please refer to the meeting agenda to be posted on the town website at www redhook.org, listing the specific link which will allow the public to view and listen to the proceedings live, which is expected to be available at www.pandaTVtwenty-three.org. Click on "Watch Live." Project documents will be posted with meeting agenda on the town's website. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard as follows. One, the public is encouraged to submit written comments by email or telephone in advance of the hearing to townclerk@redhook.org and eight four five seven five eight four six zero six by four o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please note, local law number C, proposed of two thousand and twenty-two, in the subject. Two written comments may be dropped in the town's drop box in advance of the hearing at the Town Hall, seventy-three forty South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, one two five seven one by four o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please observe the recommendations of the CDC regarding distancing and use of masks. All comments so received in advance of the hearing will be noted in the hearing record. Three interested persons may register in advance to participate remotely via Zoom. To register, please send your email name and phone number to townclerk@redhook.org by four o'clock PM on the day of the hearing. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, eight four five seven five eight four six zero six, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the town board of the town of Red Hook dated July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Very good. Thank you very much, Deanna. And before we go ahead and open it, I've shown the local law for the folks at home. It's very short and sweet. Essentially, my office and the Highway Superintendent's Office have been contacted by residents in the community, especially over the last couple of years of unusual truck roof activity on our local roads. These are not trucks that are utilizing those roads to either, you know, drop off or pick up packages or to do construction work, building homes, et cetera. They're trucks that are trying to get around the acceptable state highways and county highways. And so in order to address that, what we've established here with this law is appropriate highways for those trucks to use. Many of them frankly are not even doing any activity within the township of Red Hook. They're coming from other municipalities that are looking, looking to divert away from the state and county highways. So we've identified these major routes that we can. That's New York State, nine nine G, one ninety-nine, and also county roads, Spring Lake, East and West Curly, and Lasher Road in the northern part of town. So at this time, I'd like to, excuse me, make a motion to open the public hearing, and I'd like to reference, I think we did get one piece of correspondence today. So I would like to reference that. I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill Hamel. And let's see if I can, this, all in favor, Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Let's see if I can work several windows at one time. I'm not sure that's going to happen. Let's see. We'll get back there. All right, here we go. We did receive a letter from Surlman Ballen, representing developers, Lakeskill at Preserve. They had questions about interpretation, but we wanted to make sure that they understood that people at home understand this is not to limit trucks of any size, shape, or weight from any of the roads that are doing business, conducting business on those roads. The law says, please take the shortest route possible to get to the acceptable truck routes, and I think there was a question in here. A plain reading of the proposed local law C, this is on the second page, and the applicable authorities interpreting B and T law demonstrate that such construction apparatuses fall within the delivery exception. Yes, that's absolutely right. This is not to prevent anybody from doing any kind of business on these roads, just to take the shortest route on the local roads as a part of those efforts. Okay, very good, so I will. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't get that. Let me get that up on the screen share. If you have the time to review that, Town Board members, I know it came in sort of last minute. Yeah, there's that reference there. Proposed local law C and the applicable authorities interpreting, yes, that's right. Okay. Is there someone from the public who would like to speak on this local law? If so? There's somebody who'd like to speak on this. All right, it does not look.
I don't know if you can hear me. Yeah.
Lori?
I see my box lighting up. Yep, hi Lori, you stood on Chair of the CAC, and I was, haven't read this thing yet, but in keeping with what Aaron's about to talk with about the sustainability planning process, it seems very much in keeping with our, one of our transportation goals of enhancing safety. So just appreciating the work in doing this local law zone.
Okay, thank you very much, Lori. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this issue? Okay. Very good. At this time, I would like to direct your attention to let's get back there to the second part of the EAF. We'll get there. Thanks for your patience. Three screens going at once, a little tricky for those of us with a little technology challenge. All right, here we go. That was painfully long. Okay, we reviewed part one at our last meeting. Were there any questions about part one? Folks, that was the draft. Proposed action. Okay, let's move on to part two, the EAF. As part of the coastal management program, there's a review that's undertaken for consistency. Part of this because it establishes River Road as a route not for trucks. And that falls within the landmark district. Then both the planning board and the town board need to do a consistency analysis whether it's consistent with our local waterfront revitalization plan. And so that's also a part of our EAF. Is that a review? Are there any questions? Any potential impacts, obviously scenic areas, there is an impact, there's a positive. There's a positive impact on scenic areas as it will reduce truck traffic. Okay, moving on, here's the consistency draft determination back in nineteen ninety-five, and we are updating our LWRP plan with the great work of that task force. Moving right along. Planning Board has reviewed this proposed action and finds that it is consistent. And these are some of the issues that they look at for the folks at home. Impact on the waterfront areas. Flooding. Erosion. So on and so forth. All of which, this would not have a negative impact on. I mean, see, it's quite a lengthy form. Here's the EAF part two, including that review. No more small impact to these areas. Adopted land use planning, this is not going to generate any significant intensity in the use of a land in any of the districts. Certainly not an LWRP. And in fact, there has already been a dramatic reduction in truck traffic on River Road because of the work we've done with New York State to put in traffic calming measures and the work that Bard College has done to attain a lower speed limit within their campus. And we were looking at a lower speed limit on River Road leading up to campus. Impact on character or quality of the community, there is no CEA in Red Hook. Increase in energy. No, will the proposed impairment action is not an action, but it's an adoption of a local law. Have impact on infrastructure, it will not. Any questions there? So we've reviewed both the towns and the planning boards, LWRP, consistency determination. Here is the NAGDACK and the summary of the law. Town of Red Hook has numerous town and county roads that have scenic and historic character and support multimodal use, but were not designed or constructed consistent with modern roadway construction standards. And so when people ask, why are we passing laws like this? It's to make the road safer and to protect quality of life and to encourage multimodal use, so bikers can go on our local roads without fear of getting run off by heavy amounts of truck traffic. Okay. Town also has sufficient county and state roads. If there's one thing the town of Red Hook has, it's enough state highways. It's been a real challenge to achieve some of our vision with these state highways. And so we want to ensure, and you know, to the credit of most of the companies with large trucks, they do take the county and state roads, but we have noticed, and so have our residents, that there's been a departure from that in the last few years. And there is the town board's draft LWRP consistency, local law C, proposed, it would be local law number three. And once again, you see that it's not applicable as far as impacts, physical impacts. Especially here is a prevent impairment of scenic resources. So there, there is an impact, and that's a positive impact to the community. Scenic resources, okay. Town Board members, do you have any questions? You've had an opportunity to review this, the correspondence we received, and I believe that was the only piece of correspondence we've received on this. Having reviewed all that, are you comfortable closing the public hearing? If so, I would move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. Okay, all in favor, Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. So we would first take up the resolution adopting a secret determination of nonsignificance regarding local law number C proposed, which would now be local law three. And where we have reviewed the environmental assessment forms, we've considered the criteria where the planning board on the same date determined the project is consistent with the local waterfront revitalization program. And the town board has reviewed a draft NAGDACK. That's the part three on the EAF. Setting forth reason supporting a determination. Now therefore be resolved, the town board hereby adopts a NAGDACK in the form, declaration rather, in the form attached and determines that the proposed local law will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft EIS will not be prepared. And on the resolution for NAGDACK, is that resolution fifty, Deanna?
Fifty.
Very good, and I still move. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, very good, Jacob got in there. Ahead, Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Okay, Bill Hamel? The only thing left to do at this point is the resolution number fifty-one. Authorizing the adoption by the town board of the town of Red Hook of local law number three of two thousand and twenty-two Of twenty twenty-two. Regarding establishment of a truck route on certain highways in the town. And whereas, um. Chapter one thirty-one, vehicles and traffic. Is being amended by this local law, and a resolution was adopted by the town board back in July. Setting this public hearing. And it was duly noticed in the official newspaper and elsewhere. Public hearing being conducted on August twenty-ninth, twenty-two. And we have received and we have reviewed. The, um. Uh, input, um, from our planners. The input from the public. And the planning board, again, we should insert the date on this date, August twenty-ninth. Provides a copy of its report, we're recommending the finding that the proposal of the law is consistent with the LWRP. And we have determined that the local law is consistent. Okay, and so I move that the town board of the town of Red Hook. Passes resolution number fifty-one approving local law C. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill Hamer. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Very good, well, um, and there is the law itself, yeah. Thank you all, uh, those of us. Those of you who are joining us, um, for being so patient, it's a little after eight o'clock. Um, we are going to jump now. I'm going to stop screen sharing, get to another page. Or who wants to screen share? Who's joining us from Audubon Sustainable and doing the presentation? We have. Dawn Jardine, Laurie Husted, Sarah Devere, I see. Erin Canaan, wow, thank you all very much for joining us tonight. Um, who would like to do the screen share and, uh, focus on? On certain sections of the program. I know it's fifty slides long.
Do you want me to share and you just direct me?
Um, I think I can, if I share, then I can just go right to it, I think, then that I don't have to say, next slide. Um. Uh, so do I have access?
Uh, you should, yeah, give it a try.
Okay, um, let me just pull this out, so I have it specifically here for us, um. How fancy is that?
Fancy, fancy. Well, okay.
Okay, so, um. Hi, everybody. Uh, my name is Erin Canaan, and I'm a Red Hook resident. I live, um, in Upper Red Hook. And I'm joined here with members of a, um, ad hoc committee that got started a couple of, um. Years ago now, uh, just pre-COVID, I guess. Um, and we are working our way through a process to earn a sustainable communities, um. Certification through Audubon International. The Red Hook Town Board received, um, a grant to support a, um, community-based project and, and some of the work that we've been doing. And so we have, I think there's six or seven of us that have been working on this committee pretty consistently. We did an initial, um. Uh, kind of walkabout town, doing, um, hosting conversations and surveys, um, and discussions. In a number of categories that Audubon themselves have, um, indicated and sort of organized for us, so we're sort of following their process. Um, and what we wanted to do, we, we did come and do a report to the board. Um, I think a little under a year ago, uh, maybe it was even this past spring, where we just wanted to give you a sense of where things stood. Um, and now we are ready, uh, we've been working with Audubon to get some feedback, um, on some of the documents that we've put together. And we just wanted to. Officially hand some of the work back over to the board for review. Um, and have some feedback from you, not tonight necessarily, but maybe in the next month or so on helping us figure out how to prioritize some of the, um, categories and some of the recommendations that we've made. So we've kind of gone through this process with Audubon. In these categories, as mentioned, and we wanted to. Consider a few of these categories as maybe higher priorities than others, but we wanted, we didn't want to do that alone. Um, I just want to remind us that. The recommendations that we're making here are based on, um, hundreds of surveys. Um, and I would say hundreds of hours of conversations with different, um, members of the Red Hook community, both the people who are volunteers in leadership positions and also, um, sort of, uh, people who are just, you know, represent living in Red Hook. Uh, and what we are really interested in is these reflect those conversations, but we know that. Time moves on, things happen, new people come to town. And part of what we want to do is move forward on a few of these recommendations. Um, and return to the community to say, here's what you told us, here's what we're reflecting back to you. Um, and as a result, we, we want to, once you see it and it's down on paper. How can we move forward from here, um, and in, in what order? Um, so that we are again, sort of taking in the public's, um, recommendations and the board's recommendations. So what we thought we would do to give you a sample of what we've been working on is just to take a couple of the categories and just take a minute. To ident, to just kind of give you a sense of what we've done, what the recommendations are, and, and. You know, what we're turning over to you to, to, to review.
Okay.
We did have an open, um. Sort of an open forum for folks that had participated in this process, um, earlier this summer, and we are interested in hosting another couple of, uh, public events. Uh, so that if people are interested or curious or want to get involved with us, um, that they can. Um, so we, we thought we'd pick, um, education, uh, as one of the things, um, to review, one of the categories to review. And what we mean by education is that we mean that we want, uh, to focus, um, our efforts on informing stakeholders. Um. I get it, I'm sorry, I can't. I have to move my own toolbar here, so I can actually read the slides myself. Um, inverting stakeholders as to existing and developing practices in, um, sustainability. So this isn't necessarily education. Uh, as in, um, the Red Hook schools, this is education, and how do we as a community educate ourselves on different types of practices? Um, and one of the things we wanted to highlight is that we do have our art boxes, um, project, uh, that does. Kind of tie all of the different themes together, and we, we successfully installed, um, one of those over, uh, Apple Blossom Weekend, and we're hoping to finish the installations. Um, fingers crossed this, this fall. So. Next slide. Uh, so what we've done in each category is we've identified a potential action that seems to make sense and reflect. A bit of what we heard back from, um, these conversations. So under education, the first action is raise and track awareness of sustainability practices. Um. This could be done through a variety of mechanisms, including, um, Red Hook's enthusiasm for volunteering in education. Uh, creating annual campaigns around everyday practices around sustainability. Um, sharing ideas and strategies, um, through different mechanisms and meetings like Red Hook together. Uh, to create plans so that we can all, um, identify shared, um, practices and experiences, um, around sustainability. Um, and then also looking at things like, um, the language that we use when, um, we're talking about climate, um, in our own community. So. That's one action. Um, we also have another action here under, uh, education. Uh, reach out to local educational institutions, uh, such as the Red Hook High School Community Garden. Um, to promote crossover educational sustainability opportunities. So there's lots of different, um. Resources and opportunities that we've identified. Um, and what we're hoping to do is get some feedback and some more input from the board before we move forward. Um, and I'm just going to show, um. The, another category is environment, um, and so some actions that we've recommended here. Work with event committees to develop sustainability checklists that can be used as tools for future, um, event planning. So things like if we do. Hardscrabble, what are ways that we can support, um, compostables, uh, make sure that everybody has, you know, sort of recycling. Um, practices and, and actually provide resources for event planners in the community, so they're not trying to go it on their own. Um, and again, just sort of how do we support each other in, um, integrating and centering sustainability, um, in the way that we organize. Um, in our, uh, in the way that we connect, um, and in the way that we steward, um, the community moving forward. There is one that we thought we would mention that is on governance. And so there are a few, um, action items that you might consider under governance. Um, and there's some things that we can do around policymaking and things, and again, these are just recommendations, these are not. Um, you know, we're not, these aren't hard and fast, but these are examples of what some other communities have done, um, in their, um, in their organizing to move the needle. Uh, around sustainability. So I'm going to stop my share. And we have a couple of recommendations about what we kind of like to do, um, from here, uh, just as a group. To be helpful to the town.
Okay.
Um, one of the things is we want to turn this over to you, and we want to get your input. So some of the ideas you may absolutely hate, some of them might not be realistic. Some of them may be things that are already checked off the list, and that would be great, because like I said, this has been a long process. Um, but there are things I, I believe that are really easy. Um, uh, next steps that we can make, um, and we were thinking that the board could give us some feedback. On where the priorities match your priorities, where the things that really sort of resonate with what you're trying to do as, as a town board. And then we can sort of help, um, support that effort, um, as a volunteer committee. Um, we're hoping to share this out more publicly, we're, we're hoping to return to the folks that we talked to originally. Um, and get some of their input, uh, into the actions and see if there's ways that we could support. Um, the launch of some of these actions, there's something like eighteen categories, there's no way that we're going to be able to do this, um, in any, um, you know, to fully, uh, full way. Um, all at once, so we really would just want to make sure that, um, if folks are interested and want to get involved, or this could be a good way to set an agenda for. A committee that perhaps has been, um. Uh, less active, especially because COVID did, um, I think tamp down some of the volunteerism and, um, efforts of the. Uh, some of the local committees, that this could help maybe re-energize or re, uh, uh. Reinvigorate some, some folks, um, in that process. And then if, once we identify some priorities and we, um, help, uh, some groups get launched, and if there are gaps in, in places where there might be, um. For volunteering, maybe what, part of what we could do is we could use this as a tool to recruit volunteers who might be interested. Because it does connect to a lot of, you know, sustainability and stewardship that I think a lot of people move to Red Hook or, uh, who live in Red Hook are interested in. Um, generally, so I think that's our overview. So what we thought we'd do is we turn this over to you all, uh, we check back in maybe in about a month. To see what your thoughts are, reflect on it. We were also hoping that because there are so many different, um, categories, that maybe. To, town board members would sort of adopt if, a couple, just, you know, maybe we could speak with you directly. Uh, and sort of see if there are certain things, I know many of you sit on all the different committees, maybe there are things, conversations that we're not aware of that have been happening, and. So that's generally what we'd like to do is sort of work with you, sort of as a board, but then maybe individually and get some direction. Uh, and then, you know, figure out. Figure out what we can do as we do our installation of the art boxes, um, and are having some of our own conversations, we'd look to you for some guidance.
Great, very good. Oh, I do have one question. Are you doing a table at Hardscrabble, or are you doing some? Any outreach or, I mean, we'll put all this on the website. That's probably a lot to, to have at the table, right? Subject.
We don't have a table in mind, but we were trying to get another art box ribbon cutting.
Oh. Nice. Okay.
So can I jump in for just a second, Robert?
Yes, of course.
So I wanted to, first of all, thank you all. Um, I, I know that over the past several years, this has really been a, um. Just a labor of love in some ways, a really involved effort, uh, with lots of people and lots of input, and, um. I did get a sneak peek at the report a couple of months ago, and it's very comprehensive. Um, and I don't know if you're prepared to do this today, but I think it would be helpful just for people listening to give a sense of what the categories are. Because, um, you know, you think sustainability and you tend to think maybe just environment, but really the, um. The structure that was set out by Audubon and the input that you got from the community covered, um, a really wide range of the issues that, uh, folks are thinking and talking about. So I just thought it might be helpful to get a, a glimpse.
Absolutely, so, um, you caught me out in flipping screens, now I feel like Robert, um. Going back and forth between.
Better than I did. You see how long it took me to do three screens? I can do two, three.
I have too many things open, um, so, um, we, um. I'm, I'm just looking to see if we have, um, we do have our brochure, we do have a brochure, I think that lists the categories that I'm looking for. Um, here is, um.
I can, I can read them if you don't have them.
Um, I think reading it would be a little, so that's our brochure that we put together. Um, Laurie, I don't know if you have, um, the actual list of, um. It's eight, eighteen different categories. Um, I guess reading them is the only thing, unless Laurie, you have it.
Did you want to share that?
Behind my head, um, I mean, it is a really interesting in terms of, uh, the variety of things that, um. You know, so from agriculture. To economic development and tourism, as Erin mentioned, education and environment. With, and government, we also have housing, open space and land use. Public health. Public safety and emergency management. Recreation. Resources. Volunteerism and civic engagement. Uh, and transportation, so. Very comprehensive. We tried to draw it on the map of Red Hook, which is now switched behind. Different. I'm talking about it, and they're all in the same group.
Thank you, and so I'm going to ask another, um, unanswerable question, but, you know, one of the things that I think is interesting is. How deeply you all focused on the process as well as just the, you know, the actions or the recommendations, and. I sense that, um, that there may be some other efforts coming up over the next year or so, where there will also be quite a lot of process and community engagement, whether that's the. Community need survey, uh, that I think maybe going forward, or if we receive a grant and move forward with updates to the comprehensive plan. And I'd just be curious how you see all of these different efforts, um, complementing one another.
I think the conversations that we've been having have been, um, have identified where the gaps and the opportunities are as well as the strengths, and I think we could probably all name them, but. Be inclusive about the conversation has been really helpful, um, and I think it's primed. Um, conversations with folks that maybe haven't been at the table before, um, and I think that's, uh, uh, something we've, we'd really like to try to. Continue to encourage, um, and I, and I think. For the, for the processes that you've just talked about. You really do want to hear from everybody, you do, really do want to make the effort to go. To be very inclusive in that process, and so I would say for both the needs assessment and the comprehensive plan that. Um. The, the wider net you, you cast, the more interesting and. I think outcomes you'll get, and I, and I feel like this process has helped us understand that even more, and that. As we're having these conversations, there's certainly those, um, folks who really are deep diving into one of the categories, you know, like the, the, the. The transportation, the things that you were just talking about. Where people are identifying ways to move forward, and sometimes those, you know, it's just not. Well-known, or it's just not, uh, you know, including. Lots and lots of people, and, and so we, and, and there's gaps in volunteerism, there's gaps in pla, places where we don't have a lot of people who are working on something. And so we're, we're hoping that this could revitalize, you know, those networks of people. Um, and I think that it's also, um. A, a good way for us to understand that each one of us has an opportunity to do some stewardship. You know, you don't have to be sitting on a committee, you know, that, that people's opinions are are being solicited and, and wanted. And I think for the leadership on those different committees, they can take these resources. They can see what's been said over the last few years and maybe pinpoint some action items. Again, things that could be very easily accomplished, where there's the, a sort of immediate gratification that can happen. And then the middle to longer term, you know, processes that are going to take a little bit longer. And I think this can help those, those next steps launch a little bit easier. And I think we've talked about connecting with those efforts. That's why we want to do this with your recommendation. You know what conversations have been happening, you know, who's involved. And we can, we can help with that. We can support those efforts, lift those efforts, amplify those efforts. So we think we're, we want to sort of stick around and continue to be this sort of ad hoc committee, but we don't want to do that without your, your input.
Want to make one addition that I noticed Don added to the chat that I left out a focus area, right? So population, right? And what, what we want to recommend in that area. And that's just so telling from this whole process is like, what have we missed? Who have we missed? Who's not at the table? And so being more deliberate about the conversations. And to Aaron's point, we're still in the game, obviously. We're not just fanning and we've communicated some stuff, but we certainly haven't. You know, you miss one town board meeting and you know, there's this great local law. So it's just, it's hard to keep up with individuals. So we'll, we'll stay with you and be part of those next two processes if you want.
Good, that's what we like to hear. We like to hear that you'll, you'll help us shepherd some of these initiatives. I would say that it, it's really hopeful to have all these various categories because as you may or may not know, we have applied for a grant to update our comprehensive plan. And so when we're doing the community outreach, we can in fact solicit their opinion on all these various topics, get it all at once. It'll be a big stew with a lot of ingredients, but it'll be something that I think will really be helpful as we, you know, try to update that document and get a better understanding of the vision of the community. Because oftentimes, you know, folks will come in and they'll want to speak to us on one topic or a couple of topics. And so it's nice to get some sense and I hope that we'll be soliciting priority for them as well. Some of these issues or topics that you've mentioned, we've, we've done great work towards all of us over the years, the community together. And then there are some areas where it needs more, more work than others. So I think it's really helpful to get this. It's helpful to now put this in our camp. I think what we can do is then take a look at those categories, give you the feedback, maybe include in the feedback what we think we're working on related to that topic. And so you can, you can let us know, that's great, but, but also think about this, that and the other.
Robert, I just want to add one more thing, Julia, to your question is that because we have a sustainability focus, I think what we can offer is the, that lens for those other processes as well, because those don't necessarily immediately sustainability isn't necessarily the center of those things, but it is a good push for us to think about it that way too. So it's, it's, it's kind of framework or lens to look at where we want to go from here. And it's a, it's a good reminder that these constant action items that you need to take.
Yeah. I, I will say however, that the five people who represent the town board, we're always thinking about sustainability. We're always looking through that lens. I mean, I know you're speaking to the public, but I mean, that's how we see it. Even as budget officer, all I think about is what's sustainable and how can we, you know, continue down these paths? So very good. Well, this is exciting. Thank you so much for doing all this work. I mean, one part of me wants to thank you and one part of me is like, okay, more work to do. You know, in these busy days, but it's very exciting. And what you've done is actually make it a lot easier. It's very organized, it's very thoughtful. It already has input. It gives us a structure and a framework to, to work from, as you said. So very exciting. I don't know, town board, what do we think? Couple of meetings, maybe end of September, early October, we can get back to them with some, some feedback. We can do our, we can do our presentation to you. How about that? That'd be fun, right? Okay. All right, very good. Well, with that, anything else? Sustainable people, because I know you need to get to sleep so you can be sustainable for tomorrow. All right. Thank you very much. And we will jump on to, well, we, we already did agenda item number three. Good night, all of you. Thank you very much. Let's see, number three. So we have a resolution authorizing public bidding on highway materials. As I explained earlier, we actually have a few resolutions, right? Now we've combined the items for the public at home in order to get you the best pricing, you being the, your tax dollars. We go out and do public bids for materials and oftentimes for labor as well. And so we, with the work of the highway superintendent who prepares these documents in conjunction with our attorney to the town, we have a notice of invitation for proposals on highway department twenty twenty-three. Although technically it's really winter of twenty-two, twenty-three, materials as well, but predominantly twenty-three. This is now resolution fifty-two, is that correct, Deanna?
Yes.
Okay, very good. It's authorizing the town clerk to advertise sealed bids for the purchase of the following items, ice control abrasives, hot mix asphalt and various materials of those materials. The list of oil. Topsoil, crushed stone, including stone dust, green fill, rip, rap, gravel, ice control sand. Item four. Trucking for all those products. We take into account the cost of trucking to make sure that we're comparing apples and apples to get the best price for them. And here is that notice for the highway materials. And there are those materials, they're due back in a month, Thursday, September twenty-ninth. They're sealed bids, they're read out loud in front of all who wish to hear. There are bid specifications that were developed by our highway super engineer and our attorney to the town. If you had a chance to review those. Any question? Okay. If not, I would entertain a motion to move resolution number fifty-two. Is there a second? I'd rather all move it, is there a second?
Second.
That was Julia. All in favor, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Thank you very much, okay. We're now moving to another highway resolution. We were exploring the possibility of using a couple of pieces of equipment for a recreation department. But we have, the work department has reviewed it and found it to be suitable only for a few days' work. And so we have determined that it would be better to just rent or to share a piece of equipment, another piece of equipment than to utilize this in its current state, needs a little work. And so we have resolution number fifty-three, authorizing the sale of surplus equipment. And we are talking about the two thousand and one case back home. Any questions? If not, I so move resolution fifty-three, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving along, the plow truck, same with the plow truck, it's twenty-year-old plow truck. Put it out for auction and the funds would go back into the highway department's budget. It's now resolution number fifty-four. Utilize one of the auction services for the folks at home. An ISO move, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along, we have, okay, that was the grant notice there. We're going to do some committee and board reports. Well, I'm not going to do it off of this screen share, it looks like. And I can get to the other one. Thank you for your patience. All the information and packets are available on the town's website. If anybody is interested in reading all of it, I would set aside hours to do so. Okay, here we go. We're going to start off with the tree preservation committee, which I believe is Jacob, is that right?
Yep. So at the August sixteenth meeting, following and to discuss, there are new planted by signs installed at Rec Park West, Mill Road School and Pitcher Lane and Planting Sites. As everybody knows, we haven't had a lot of rain this summer, so committee members are putting in an extra work watering several times a week. So we really appreciate that, keeping the trees healthy. There was this discussion on how to conduct a tree inventory, because the previous program was no longer in existence. So sure, there'll be more to come on that. Fall tree order was discussed, it'll include selections for Rec Park West and Mill Road School. And then they shared the resignation letter from Eleanor Ferry, the owner that served on the commission for many years. And we, you know, appreciate her service on the commission. And there's some information here about that. And I think we talked about some of that at the last meeting. And then the new member was welcome. So, so that's it for the tree preservation commission.
Thanks, Jacob. Okay, Red Hook Recreation Commission. Minutes normally given by minute report, normally given by Christine Kane. I can do a quick summary. Basically, we had a very successful summer rec camp. We did have one cancellation due to the heat index reaching over a hundred and five degrees. We want to thank our directors, Ashley Lukach and Helen Stumbo and Hadley O'Connor, our health director, for the terrific job they did. There was a talent show for the this year, I noticed. And a lot of work goes into this. This camp is a free camp available for the Red Hook Central School District area. And so we're pleased to be able to offer it again this year and hope to do so in the future. Co-ed city games, sports camp and tennis, they're all finished as well. A lot of those summer programs. Field hockey camp also concluded, that was in the latter part of August. There were pool parties at the Red Hook Pool. And let's see, playground equipment. We continue to work, we're hoping to get the addition to the skate park completed by this fall before frost comes in. And we have been starting to make some quick and easy improvements to the dog park. We have excess picnic tables, so we brought two of them over to the dog park. We now have a mud mitt dispenser and a garbage container over there. And we'll be looking for input for future revitalization of the dog park. So don't be surprised if you hear us reach out to you if you're a user of the park. I think a lot of that is maintenance related. The Legion Band once again had their concert over at Linden Avenue Middle School. Skate park I mentioned, men's basketball league and the fields are getting a lot of use. And we hope to be able to share those with the other entities in the future. Okay, that's all I have for work. Bill Hamel?
Good evening.
Dogs?
Yep. Really not much in the way of, of activity. I did ask our liaison what the wildlife, because it was an increase, what that generally constitutes. And it's almost always deer, raccoons, and to my surprise, chipmunks.
Yeah.
So, but it's relatively light, you know, nuisance dogs generally, barking dog. There's no dangerous dogs, which are the things we pay most attention to. So that's about it.
Are you going to tell us what the chipmunk report was all about?
You know, I, I, I don't know.
Okay.
But we all have chipmunks in our yards.
Yeah, okay. While we have you, Bill, would you be kind enough to do the police department or?
You could please scroll.
I'm scrolling as fast as I can scroll, don't make me too dizzy.
For the period, they have a hundred incident, you know, calls that they went on with twenty-three tickets, substances, and they made three arrests.
Okay.
That's it.
And I understand they're going to be needing a new car pretty soon. So they're looking into the possibility and obviously they will want some assistance from us. And since they cover our territory as well in an acquisition of a car, they're looking at an electric car. So.
And I know there are some grants the DOJ also has, they, they flow through the state, but they're, they're used for, for the help acquire equipment.
Okay, well, let's, let's set up a meeting with the various folks and let's, let's get cracking on that. Okay. I think that's all we have for reports now. I have the reorg last. Since last update, six twenty-two, I think it actually was July, but dated up top, eight twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two. And so my question is, we have a bunch of letters or emails of interest for especially the housing committee, the newly formed housing committee nine members. I won't scroll through them all. But Julia, what, where do we stand on, on that? When, when's a realistic expectation? We might start to populate that, not to put any pressure on you, but just for the folks who are interested. So we can give them an idea.
No, it's a great question and I'm actually going to punt it to Jacob.
Oh. Jacob, you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
The question was a realistic expectation when we might be constituted that committee a couple more months, you think? Or?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. I mean, we're, Julie and I talked about, you know, we wanted to put, you know, another invitation out at this meeting, something that we're talking about to say, you know, we received, you know, people coming in, like people submitting materials. We'd like to have, you know, as many people as people coming in, like people submitting materials, we'd like to have, you know, as many people as interest set applies. So giving opportunity to do that. But also, you know, starting in the next month or so, reaching out to people and talking to them about their interest in the committee, what they think they'd be able to offer, discussing the work we hope the committee will be doing. So you know, I think that whenever Julie and I talked about this, we thought that maybe, you know, the back end of September, the beginning of October, maybe starting to have a couple of people to recommend to the board to, you know, consider first appointing to the committee. So as far as a full set of appointments, it might take a couple of months to get, you know, everybody, you know, identified and appointed, but hopefully sooner than that to start.
Okay.
I think one thing we something to do is to reach out to the villages to invite them to be considering individuals to serve as, you know, liaisons to them as well. So that might be something that's a, a next step after, after this meeting, because we have, we have materials. So maybe we can kind of share some of the people who've applied and then invite them to, if there are other people I think would be good to recommend those people to reach out as well.
Okay, very good. Yeah. I know you, you want to have a broad range of expertise and opinions and get something well-rounded. I notice you do have, you, you may have some duplicate skill sets and some of those submissions. I can notice there's two real estate salespeople, for example. That kind of thing. So yeah, that does take a while to get a more round, you know, more well-rounded group together. So, but let's just let those folks know it's gonna be a couple more months before. And yeah, that's a great idea. Let's, we'll do another news alert. Maybe later this week and we'll send it out. Okay. Does that sound, does that work?
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you.
Very good. We did have, you know, we have letters of interest also for the Greenway and Trails Committee. And one of them, Lisa Whalen did speak to me about. And that was Jim Blakeney. I see there's a letter from another interested individual, which I, I did not hear from. Maybe it's more recent. I did not hear from Lisa about. But if I scroll back to Greenway and Trails Committee, we have, well, at the moment, we only have that one vacancy. We have to update the Greenways and Trails. Let's do that now, shall we? Folks at home, sorry, I'm looking dizzy watching this. Let's do that. Okay, so there's a vacancy that would have ended twenty nineteen, actually it was twenty twenty-one. So Tim Blakeney, we can put him there. And that actually is a twenty twenty-three expiration. And all of the other individuals would need to be updated on the sheet, twenty twenty-three for Bruce, twenty twenty-three for Brenda. Hannah, same, John Kuhn, twenty twenty-two, Sue, Kathy Aga, twenty twenty-two. Doug, twenty twenty-two. And Lisa is already in the twenty twenty-three. So I would like to make that recommendation that we appoint Jim Blakeney to the Greenway and Trails Committee, to their term ending in twenty twenty-three. And update the terms on Bruce Cuthbert, Brenda Kagle, Anna San Juan, John Kuhn, Kathy Aga and Dexter Rinsky as outlined. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, that would seem to wrap up the business for tonight. I referred to the correspondence already. Before we go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting, we're going to have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the hire and fire of a particular individual. Folks, any other words for the public before we go into an executive session? Okay. If not, I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Okay. And if you would all be kind enough to run off your cameras. And to mutual volume. Okay, very good, everyone. For the folks at home, it's nine oh five. We have exited executive session. And we are reopening the meeting. We have no additional business to conduct this evening. But we want to wish you all a very happy remainder of the summer season. We have a special meeting coming up on September sixth. It's for, at the, at the moment, just one item, which is to consider a bond referendum associated with the grant for a new water tank. If we're successful, the water board will be looking at replacing the water tank in the next couple of years. Okay, with that being said, I would like to entertain a motion to close tonight's town board meeting. Would make that motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Jacob. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Julia. All in favor, Bill Hamel?
Aye.
And myself. Good night, everyone. Stay healthy.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.